I am going to tell you a little bit about our moderator. Judge Tressler served on the Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas from 1983 until his retirement from the bench in 2010. He's presently a senior lawyer at the law offices of Barry Miller, who is with us here tonight. He's also an adjunct professor at several local colleges and universities. He is a graduate of my alma mater as well, Young Reese Pennsylvania. He's a highly regarded jurist and he is a lifelong Republican. We asked him to moderate this. He's not been in politics for many, 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 many years, but he's known to be fair, he's conservative, and he's well spoken, so we asked him to be the moderator. As I said, this is an open process. Every one of the candidates has been invited. And in that ilk, when Mary Woods asked if she could speak, she was a candidate considering running, and she called me and asked if she could speak, and I said that I was happy to have her do that. After she speaks, Judge Tressler will read you the rules and begin the program.
Thank you. Good evening, Mrs. Chair Haiti, Judge Tressler, and France. It is my honor to serve you as the Montgomery County Commissioner. With your help and support, I could not detain this important position in county government. The new year gives us the opportunity as a party to restore good government to Montgomery County by winning two of the three commissioner seats. I had contemplated announcing my candidacy to serve you as county commissioner. I believe I am uniquely qualified to serve in that position. I manage an office in county government. I handle personnel matters and deal with the budgeting process. I know how county government works and how I can be improved. I am unashamedly pro-life, am the mother of nine children. I have one ahead and one behind. I'll have my sixth college graduate this May to are finishing out to a master's degree, to are working on a master's degree, so I can balance a budget further. Politically, I have served as a committee person in Upper Dublin for nineteen years. I was the area leader there for eight years, and I've been on state committee for nine years, and currently on the third term. My name has appeared on the ballot countywide seven times. Four times for jury commissioner and three times for state committee. So, name recognition is there. If I ran, my goals would be three followed. First, to lower taxes and cut waste spending. Second, to establish a business-friendly atmosphere that will promote economic development in this county. Finally, as a member of the governor's opioid workforce, I have seen firsthand how this plague is devastating on families. I will strive to make Montgomery County a nationwide leader in combating this surge. However, after serious contemplation and consideration, I have decided not to be a candidate this year. I ask the chair for this brief opportunity tonight to explain my decision. In order to mount a successful campaign to retake the courthouse, one needs to have a strong campaign infrastructure and fundraising base. I believe one of the reasons I have never lost an election is that I had always done the necessary preparation and groundwork to achieve success. I quickly realized that running for county commissioner was a task the likes of which I had never attempted before. I had not established the fundraising infrastructure, the behind-the-scenes work that is necessary to win. I assure you, that will never happen again. I came to this decision on my own. Neither the chair nor any other party official asked me not to run or pressured me in any way. As a matter of fact, I wish to thank you for your gracious and encouraging shoes into me throughout this process. Thank you. Today is Alma Raden's birthday, and like him, I believe we should never say a bad word about a fellow Republican. However, if unfairly attacked or threatened, I will defend myself. Having already made this difficult decision not to run, a few weeks ago, I received a call from the incumbent, and he told me that he would come after me hard. He was calling to warn me. He proceeded to warn me for eighteen minutes and eighteen seconds. You can imagine my reaction. I was back in the ring. I told my friends and advisors that I was in and that I would not be intimidated by you. Those friends and advisors had to convince me that my original decision was the correct one. In my heart, I know that I was not ready to run for commissioner this year, but it is important for everyone to know that I will never be intimidated by a vote. I also believe we cannot succeed in November unless we unify as a party and stop fighting each other. With that, I'd like to thank you for all that you do to keep our party strong. Thank you. God bless you. God bless America.
I want you to know, I spent my three high school years growing between Saturday Night Live or Thanksgiving. Did any of you remember? I'm quite old. Is there anybody here who played Groper Perk? When you joined the Botsma? I'm sorry. I guess not. Well, I wanted to thank you for so much fun. We also beat you three times. My name is Paul Tressler, and as you heard, I was a judge of the Court of Common Pleas for twenty-six years. I'd be remiss at this time if I didn't thank you for supporting me when I ran initially and for my two retentions. That's one of the reasons I agreed with Liz Mucker, so I could tell you that. When I was initially approached by Liz, I was going to refuse to moderate this. I was going to refuse. I'm not a politician, but the more I thought about it, about our current situation, the angrier I became. And that's why I'm here tonight. I'm happy to moderate this, but I have a couple of comments that I asked Liz if I could make, and she said I could. One of the things I want you to understand is that the reason for this new procedure is to give backbone and the power of this, in this party, the Republican Party, the committee people. I was a committee person when I started years ago, and you're the workers. And unfortunately, in the past, our candidates were often decided by the chairperson and by affluent Republicans, and there was little input, at least I felt there was little input, from the grassroots workers. And that's wrong. Many of our previous candidates used their personal influence and money to obtain a ballot position. Others ran on a single-party issue. And it's always funny to me when you run on a single-party issue, because most of the time, the person who's running has no power to change the issue they're running on, which to me is a little palacious. Many candidates care only about the advancement of their own personal agenda. I think you see that all the time. We aren't important as individuals. We're only important as a group. Understand that. Often candidates, when they get rejected, they took their money and their political followers and went home. That's really a good attitude to have if you live in a democracy, isn't it? I'm being sarcastic there. The divisiveness and the personal selfishness that has existed, not just in this county, but in a lot of counties, has caused the GOP local, national, and state elections. There's no doubt in my mind. You're either in it or you're not. And if you're not, get out. I want to know who the people are who are Republicans. And I want to ask you questions. I'm going to ask you to put your hands up. How many of you believe in equality of opportunities? How many of you? This is the right to advance according to your abilities and your effort. How many of you work until the job is done and not until the clock tells you it's time to go home? How many of you believe that only American citizens should be allowed to vote in American How many of you believe should be respected? Back in 1910, Teddy Roosevelt, in one of his last speeches, was talking about people who were known as German-Americans, and he was worried about it because he envisioned the potential of the First World War coming. And he made a comment that I think is applicable, and I'm going to ask you, how many of you believe this? How many of you believe or agree with Teddy that there is no such thing as a hyphenated How many of you believe in a person's right to work, but not on his or her right to a handout when capable of working? How many of you believe the press should be unbiased when it reports the alleged facts? How many of you are proud? How many of you are proud? Now, the reason I ask you that, because there's these questions, is because you belong here. You're Republicans because you're Americans and because you share these views. No single individual, I don't care who they are, is more important than those views. And one of the things that I think is great about this type of meeting is it gives you an opportunity to find out where the people who you're going to vote for actually stand. Now, our country would have failed without people who believe as we do. They'd have failed in 1776, they'd have failed in 1860, and you know something? They could fail today because we are in serious jeopardy. We're being run by the mob, not the people. And to some extent, we have permitted this to happen because of our own pettiness and selfishness that I mentioned earlier. How many people in this area, which is developing, have come out of Philadelphia? And why are they out here? Did you ever ask them? I want the good schools. I want lower taxes. I want protection for my family. Well, that's fine, welcome, but don't bring that out here with you. You're going to have the same thing. And you can see it. Mary would have been a good person to ask that question to. If you're a Republican, actively support your party candidates, even if they're not the person you wanted. It doesn't matter. It's a question whether they're a Republican. The day of throwing our internet tantrums and staying quiet and going home because you don't get your way if you're a candidate are over. Those people don't belong here either. Not that I don't want them, I do. Now, I'm telling you these things before we start because I'm not suggesting that by being active and participating and going out and confronting problems instead of just ignoring them, as we often do, and I'm as guilty as you are in the political sense. Trust me. I'm telling you this because you're not doing it for you. I'm not doing this for myself. I'm doing it for my grandson. I'm doing it for my kids, and I'm doing it for those who come after me. So, when I thought about these things, the reason I'm telling you this now is because of the fact that when I initially was reluctant, I thought about these things, and I thought that at least I'd have an opportunity to express my views to you. And I'm absolutely amazed and happy to see that you have the same ones. So, thank you. Now, let me get to what I'm hearing. There are some rules that I want to read to you that apply to all the candidates up here. Each candidate will be given up to three minutes for an opening statement. Each candidate will be given up to two minutes to answer questions. Candidates will not be allowed to interrupt each other. If they do, they're out of here. If the candidate feels the need for a rebuttal to another candidate's answer, that candidate will be given one minute for the rebuttal, and no more. And by the way, these are being timed. The candidates will be asked to stay and mingle with the attendees to answer questions that you might personally have. There will be no questions from the floor at this time, because we're starting out just trying to see how long this procedure is going to take. And I assure you that the Montgomery County Republican Committee did not provide these questions to the candidates before their answers. All right, I'm going to ask you, in the order from my left to, well, actually, from your right to left, I'm going to ask the candidate to stand and give in his or her name. Well, we don't have a "her" now. Then I'll ask the questions, and if they ask comments about their personal background that they think is cogent to what we're doing here, I'm sure that they'll tell you that as well.
Just for three minutes?
No, no, no. I'm just, I'm changing it a little. You guys are cold, what do you expect, right? Nobody else would have asked that question. Now I can't do it. Okay, go ahead.
Well, Judge, thank you very much. My name is France Krasakovic. I am proud to represent the people of Upper Potters Township. I thought I could talk loud around the...
I know it's a little...
Anyhow, thank you, Judge. My name is France Krasakovic. I'm proud and honored to serve my neighbors in Upper Potters Township on the Board of Commissioners. For the last five years, I've also been area leader for the Republican Party in Pottstown and the three Potters, as well as served my neighbors on Republican State Committee. I'll reserve further comments for the three-minute introduction, but thank you very much, Judge.
All right, the first question, I'm going to give the questions now instead of... Do you want me to introduce them all now? Okay, would you rather have them do it? Number two.
What, you can get your three, four minutes? Do you want that?
Now, he said he's going to do that later, Liz.
Well, then we'll start with the introduction. Each person gets their three minutes to tell what they think is...
That's all right. Thank you once again, Your Honor. And I wanted to take a second to thank Dean, thank Fred, and thank Sean for being willing to stand up and serve. So, if we could all give them a round of applause to be a representative. Fellow Republicans, my name is France Krasakovic. I am the proud grandson of a strong woman born in Poland in 1926. At the age of sixteen, my father's mother was captured and processed through Auschwitz. Survived only because of the color of her hair and the color of her eyes. She was, she looked like the perfect area child. Three years later, in 1945, she and countless others were rescued, liberated by allied and American forces just the other week we celebrated Liberation Day. Soon thereafter, after being rescued, she would meet a young Army Staff Sergeant, Rudolf Krasakovic. They would fall in love, be married, and have five children, my father being the oldest of the five, Rudolf Krasakovic III. He would go on to serve in the United States Air Force in Vietnam, and unfortunately, in 2001, suffered a fatal heart attack and is buried at Barabas National Cemetery in Pensacola, Florida. In 2013, my grandmother passed away, and she's buried not too far, just a few feet, from her oldest son. I'm also proud to say that I am the grandson of a two-time recipient of the Silver Star, twice the recipient of the Bronze Star. Army Master Sergeant France Quentin Cook was born in December of 1918. His father at the time had been recently deployed to World War I, and my great-grandmother decided to name her firstborn son France because that's where his father was at the time of his birth. My mother, the youngest of four daughters, decided to name her firstborn son after her father. My grandfather, my hero, is today buried having passed away in December of 2002. He's buried with thousands of other of our heroes at Arlington National Cemetery right outside of Washington, D.C. It's that legacy, it's that legacy of committed service that led me to go into the United States Air Force right out of high school. It's that legacy of dedicated service that called me to serve my community as a township commissioner in Upper Potters, and it's that legacy and that love of country that is leading me to get into this race and to ask you humbly to support me for the Republican nomination for Montgomery County Commissioner. Thank you so much.
First of all, I'd like to thank Liz Haiti and the Republican Party for sending us stuff this evening, and also the honorable Judge Tressler, who I had the honor of working with in my past as a juvenile police officer. One of the best judges you could ever go in front of, one of the most fair and honest men I know. Thank you, Judge, for your service.
My name is Dean Eisenberger, and I want to be the next Commissioner in Montgomery County. Whenever I say that to someone, the first thing they say to me is "Why?" The answer is simple. I believe Montgomery County is headed in the wrong direction, and we need to change the leadership at the top. Over the past decade, county government has lost sight of taxpayers it's supposed to serve. It continues to spend more than is sustainable. It has sold off assets to pay bills from failed ventures and should never have been to in the first place. And now, thanks to new rules that are making governments more transparent across our state, for the first time, we'll be able to see the real numbers on how deeply our county is in debt and how quick it comes to pension and post-retirement employee benefits. We are so underfunded, you can't imagine. Do you realize in a $450 million budget, $17 million goes to servicing the debt? These are the issues that concern me and brought me to this race. Our next Board of County Commissioners must be willing to make tough decisions, rein in spending, and stop playing politics to ensure a better position for us as residents. I believe I'm the best prepared to make those decisions, and I think once you know more about me and my record, you'll agree. First, I have made it through tough decisions as a Plymouth Township Council member and county chairman. I held the lines on taxes. I've never voted for a tax increase. I've never been involved in a tax increase. We are one of the lowest at 1.6 mills in Plymouth Township that provides the highest level of services in Montgomery County. Everything is included, and for the average taxpayer to pay $220. We built a rainy day fund, and when I started in government, we were $3 million in deficit spending, and when I left, we had an $8 million surplus. We did this by applying real-world business practice to budgeting, reducing costs and simply saying "no" to things that weren't important or necessary and that a government shouldn't be involved in. Second, I have stood up to special interests. In Plymouth Township, we changed the responsible contractor's ordinance, that thing that you hear everybody buzzing about, the apprentice program. We removed the words and allowed local vendors to bid on local projects. The money saved was intense. Third, I will bring the county government a real-world perspective, that of a successful businessperson, a man who has founded and grown my own business of 50-plus employees, managed budgets, and created jobs. As a husband and father concerned about the future, we're leaving for our kids, and as a former law enforcement officer, committed to keeping our community safe.
Yep. Time's up. Time's up.
Good evening, and thank you, thank you, Judge, thank you, colleagues. My name is Frank Dunn. I am wanting to be one of your two Republican county commissioners in Montgomery County. I say one and two because it's only as a majority in Norse Town where we recapture the greatness that was Montgomery County just a few short years ago. Only with two Republican county commissioners will we make the county great again for all of our residents. So, we're going to get into my background and the questions. Let me just get four things out of the way first that are important to all of us and do away with the suspense. I am a pro-life family man who is very proud to be the foster of two sons, one which is here, and the other is sick tonight, and he's got a math test tomorrow. Couldn't join us. I am absolutely pro-life. I was on the pro-life committee at St. Ellen's Church. Second, I am a Second Amendment supporter, and as a former Marine infantry officer and combat, rah, combat firearms instructor, I'm very comfortable around firearms, and I'm comfortable with you owning a firearm, because that's what you choose to do. Third, I voted for President Trump. I worked very hard as a area leader along with France, and as a committee person for the President, Senator Toomey, and our entire slate, as I have since 2006, when I became a committee person. I work for the team. I knock on doors, I put hangers out, and I stand out at Wingsfield, Whip Lane, District Six, all day long, and advocate for our whole team. Number four, if you honor me in Congress and Republican voters throughout the county honor me with being one of your nominees for the ball, of course, I'll run as a team, a unified team, but not just with my county commissioner partner, whoever it may be, but with every single candidate on the Republican ticket throughout this county, our superb role officer, some blue bar here tonight, with our borough council members, and our school board directors, and our township supervisors, and I got thirty seconds. You know what? We're going to have a team of teams. We need to be, they're on me, they weren't on you guys, but we are going to have a team of teams, and we will accomplish this mission. I am not looking to be a county commissioner for a paycheck. I'm looking for a mission, and as we talk over the next couple of weeks, next couple of months, I would like you to consider joining that mission. It is not mission impossible. It is a mission that we can accomplish together as a team of teams. Thank you very much.
My name is Sean Gale, and I'm proud to be a candidate for Montgomery County Commissioner, but I'm also proud to be the running mate of current incumbent Montgomery County Commissioner Joe Gale. And I'll tell you why I'm proud to be his running mate, because for the past three years, he's done a damn good job. He's been an outspoken voice for common sense and reason, whether it's being the first Republican in over a decade to oppose an passive increase, that's Joe Gale. Whether it's exposing the backroom deals and corruption in the courthouse, that's Joe Gale. Whether it's opposing the vehicle registration fee, the extension of the Corby gas tax, that's Joe Gale. He's been the leader that the Montgomery County Republicans can count on, and I can't be more proud to be his running mate on this ticket. And I'll tell you why that's important, because it only matters if we win. And the ticket of Joe Gale, the incumbent Montgomery County Commissioner, and Sean Gale is the ticket that can win in November. That's the only ticket that can win. I was Joe Gale's campaign manager four years ago, when he won an upset primary and an upset general election against the odds. For the past three years, four if you count that year, I've been focused on one thing, how to win back Montgomery County. Every day, that's what I thought about. Every day, that's what I thought about. That's what I worked towards, and that's what Montgomery County Commissioner Joe Gale has worked towards. And we have found a way to do it. We are in a unique position in Montgomery County where we have a minority commissioner whose name recognition is higher than the two Democrat commissioners combined. That's a unique opportunity. I share his name. That means I walk into this race with the second highest name ID in Montgomery County. That's how races are won. That's a great starting point. We can build off that. We can win back this county. We have a plan to do it, but this is the only ticket that can win back Montgomery County. I couldn't be more proud of everything that he's done, including being the first elected official to endorse Donald Trump. When you're the first, people say, Joe, why'd you do that? And you say, because Donald Trump can win. That's what matters. You gotta win. This is the ticket that can win. So thank you. I look forward to the questions, and I look forward to winning back Montgomery County for the over two hundred thousand registered Republicans in the county. Thank you very much.
All right, we'll start with the questions, and I'll, I'll ask one, and then we'll go, we'll take all four answers on that question. All right? It's not tough. Yeah, number one. Which, Frank, which of your qualifications or life experiences do you think most apply to the position of County Commissioner and why?
Thank you Judge. Well, I think the most obvious answer is the last three and a half years that I've spent as a Commissioner in Upper Potters Grove Township. Immediately upon election, the Board President at the time asked me to be the Director of Intergovernmental Relations. That meant going to COG meetings. That meant joining the Montgomery County Association of Township Commissioners. That meant that association asking me to serve as its Executive Committee for the State Association. All those things I've done over the last three and a half years. We've used that opportunity, my knowledge of state government, my attendance at county commissioner meetings. We've used that to pass resolutions, acting as the responsible municipal constituent that we are, opposing prevailing wage, opposing or supporting rather Sterling Act tax reform. For those of you that don't know very briefly, if you live here in East Greenville and you work in the city of Philadelphia, all of the local taxes that you pay staying in the city of Philadelphia, they don't make their way back to East Greenville. So the three and twelve percent that you're paying there doesn't come back to you. So that pays the folks that work and live in Montgomery County or in my neighborhoods are bearing the burden of paying for all of the necessary services that government provides. We also stood up and passed resolutions asking for Act one eleven reform, that's binding arbitration, asking the state to have the FOP share the cost of that arbitration. We also have supportive action with respect to municipal pension reforms. The cost of pensions are going to break municipalities. They're going to break state government. They're going to break school districts, and frankly, they're going to break county government as well. So all of those experiences over the last three and a half years, I think uniquely qualify me for the office of County Commissioner. And thank you very much, Your Honor.
You want me to repeat the question or?
Could you judge, because I did that so bad with the timer. You just want it to take longer, I understand.
It's a, it's a difficult question to say just one thing, Judge. I think life, as we all know, life is something that you blend so many things with. My life has been blessed serving in the public domain. I started as a police officer, Judge, in Franconia Township. And I spent fourteen years after my six months in Franconia and Plymouth Township retiring as a lieutenant. That combination with my public sector work and then becoming an elected official, if any of you don't know Plymouth Township, I served eight years, is a home rule first-class municipality that has term limits. I was term limited out and I couldn't serve until January of twenty eighteen. But I walked into with all these different experiences to budgeting, to personnel, human relations, so many different things. If you looked at the county website today and all the different offices that are listed and the amount of money that's being spent in each of those offices, the position of Commissioner is as important as anything when it comes to oversight. You need to be aware and have somebody there, which we don't have today, looking at the dollars and cents line item by line item. My experience in private business, my experience in the public domain, and my experience as an eight-year politician in Plymouth Township as chairman of council gives me that ability. I bring that experience and my life experiences. Not many of you can say being chased by people with guns or being in the calls with guns and everything. We can go into all the details on my background on the police side and why I'm better and this is better. But I got into this for one reason. My qualifications are second to none, and I believe I can do a better job. That's why I'm here.
So my qualifications for, for this office. I think I'd, I'd say twenty-five, thirty years of lessons learned in leadership. Started my career as a Marine infantry officer, as I said before. There's no better leadership training than lead rings and combat. And then bringing them all home to the ranks that we did to go for. Very honored and privileged to do that. You learn a lot of lessons as an infantry officer with any, any kind of service method. And you certainly learn many lessons as a first responder in police work. So that was my grounding. Second, I got into a business career, owned a business, a very successful business, and, and continued by a Marine Reserve career, again, learning lessons, learning how to get things done, learning how to run a successful business. And then, as I moved on through my career, I got into the community service. Some of you got my letter, said, notice I call myself an independent management consultant with a volunteering problem. Well, I had the opportunity to do that volunteer part, to serve my community. And all those lessons learned over twenty-five, thirty years, lessons learned in leadership, how to balance a budget, how to not vote for tax increases, how to save open space, how to revitalize communities like we've done in Whitman. And all those things kind of come together, serving as a historian at the American Legion of my own, historically African-American Legion post. I'm very proud of that. Formed by eighteen returning World War II service members who formed the W D down in the post. Serving on the Boys and Girls Club, North Penn Valley Boys and Girls Club. So those lessons put them all together. I think that's what I'd say is my qualification, Judge.
Well, my opening remarks, I think I gave you my biggest qualification to be a candidate in this race. I'm one of, along with my brother Montgomery County Commissioner Joe Gale, of the only ticket that can win in Montgomery County. And I want to add one to that because there's two agendas here. There's my agenda and my running mate's agenda, and that's to win Montgomery County back. And then there's another agenda out there. The Democrats like this agenda and a heck of a lot of Republicans like this agenda, and that's why I'm pretty angry about it. That is to pair Montgomery County Commissioner Joe Gale, because you can't beat him in a primary because he's done a good job. Let's pair Joe with another Republican who's willing to play ball, who's willing to go along with the game. And let's vote for him in the general election, cut a deal with the Democrats, get him, not her anymore. Let's get him or her into that minority position and get Joe out. Joe's a squeaky wheel. Joe draws attention to all that's going on, all the backroom deals, all the corruption, all the campaign finance reports that mirror the county agenda. They don't like that. That's not how business is done. And don't kid yourself, folks. Government is a business. When you have a budget that's over four hundred million dollars, people want a crumb. A crumb can be pretty dang big, and that's what they want. They want the crumbs. And there's a lot of Republicans who are willing to cut that deal and make deals for the crumbs. Joe Gale isn't one of them, and I'm not either. We're taking the whole pie and we're taking it back for the people of Montgomery County because that is what they deserve. So you want to know why I'm qualified? Yeah, I can talk about it. I have a finance degree. I have a real estate degree. I'm a corporate attorney for healthcare conglomerate battling the pandemic. Yeah, I'm qualified to be County Commissioner. But I'm qualified to be a candidate because I'm going to win. I know how to win. That's what we do. That's what we've been doing, and that's what sure as hell what we're going to do when the Gale brothers win the primary on May twenty-first. Thank you.
Repeat, shall we? The second question. Well, we'll take turns. We'll let you go. If you, the second question is this. If you win the primary, do you plan to run as a team with the running mate chosen by the Republican voters and also with the other GOP row officers?
Yes. You took my line. Yeah, I was going to say yes, you dropped the mic.
I could have said a lot there.
I said that in my opening, but I think I maybe gave the politicians disease because I was just going to reemphasize it. Absolutely. And I go back to my opening statement. We will run as a team. Whoever you select amongst us, we will run as a team of teams with our row office candidates, school board directors, council borough, borough council members and township supervisor officials. We'll win, and we'll make history in November.
So obviously, I'm going to run as a team with the candidate that's selected in the primary because I'm already running with him. So we're going to be the ticket in November, so I certainly will run with that ticket after we win the primary. But you also mentioned something else that's very important, and so row offices. Do you notice that they're not here tonight? In the past, here's the invitation from four years ago, it was a candidate forum for all the row, all the countywide candidates. But it's not this year. It's a county commissioner forum. Because that's what this is about. This is about getting Joe Gale out of office because he doesn't play ball with the Democrats. So to answer your question, yes, I will run with Joe Gale when we win the primary. And two, we will carry as many of the row office candidates as we can. Because if we win at the top of the ticket, that helps everybody else running. Two. This is out West. You guys are being targeted by the Democrats. All this, you know, across two oh two, they're all flipping Democrat. And all that money is going to be spent out here to split these townships as well. So you decide what you want. If you want somebody at the ticket who's going to win and help carry as many of the local races as we can across the border, we can do that. Or we can continue what we've been doing, losing state House races, losing state Senate seats, giving them away to the Democrats, losing municipalities all across Montgomery County. So it matters to you people most out here out West. You have something to lose. So if you don't, if you want a united ticket that can win, Joe Gale, Sean Gale, that's the ticket. That's what's going to help all of you. That's what's going to help the taxpayers and families in Montgomery County. And that is how we take this county back. Thank you.
I don't know if you heard, understood the question. No, I, I, my question is very simple, sir. If, if, if your brother does not, does not win, are you willing to run with a candidate who is?
I don't play a fantasy world. We're going to win the primary.
Well, I guess the answer to that is no.
Don't put words in your mouth.
I'm not. You, you put those words there, you're set.
You're the moderator. You're not a candidate.
I'm not a candidate, but I'm a Republican. I'm sick of hearing this crap.
Okay, good. That is why, this is a prime example, we have a biased.
Either sit down or die.
Get that chair over, Sean. Sean, sit down. Thank you, Judge.
If you're a minority commissioner, what do you think your role is?
Francis.
I'm a little guy.
I, I, the jury don't like Polish people.
The answer is yes. Anyhow, I'd also just like to point out very quickly that I see Vicki Lightcap in the room. Vicki Lightcap is one of our candidates for the county feed this year. I see Beverly, Rosa Bowser. I see Joshua Stouch. I see a number of people. Ron Holt in the back room, I'm sorry, that are and have declared their candidacy for the row offices. So because those are not, I believe, this year being contested, my understanding is that the party put this together for the one race that is contested. But having said that, yes, I am committed to the Republican team. I am a Republican. I've been a Republican my whole life. And if I may just steal thirty seconds from the previous question, one thing that I found to point out is two years ago, or I'm sorry, three years ago in Upper Potters Grove, I cast the only no vote for a tax increase. The very next year, we got rid of the nuisance that is the per capita tax. It's only a couple of dollars, but we got rid of it. And then the very next year, we decreased taxes seven percent in Upper Potters Grove. So not only have I voted against tax increases, I've actually lowered taxes in my township. So thank you, Your Honor, and yes, I'm committed to the Republican team because I'm a Republican.
All right, Dean, the next question. If you are a minority commissioner, what do you think your role is? Do you believe you can be an effective watchstone on the opposition while also being able to work together with an instructor week to achieve some of your objectives?
Thanks Judge for the, for the question. I'm not, I'm not going there. I'm not running to be a minority commissioner. Now, I fully understand this is a steep climb, right? But getting back to what I said, running as a team of teams, we can work together. We can make history in November. And if I wake up after Election Day and I find I'm the minority commissioner, I got a pretty good idea of how I would be effective one. I would build coalitions, not factions, but we've got to work together. When Ted Potsie calls me up and says, I have a problem with an intersection in my township, I'll pick up the phone. I will advocate for him. When my friend Art Buster, he'll still call even though he's not running for orsester, calls me and says, we've got to fix this on Buster Road, I'm going to pick up the phone. I'm going to find out what the problem is. I'm going to talk to the planning commission. And you know what? I'm going to talk to my colleagues too, and we're going to figure out a way to fix it. Because there's sixty-two municipalities in this, in this county, and every one of them has problems like mine. Whitman Township. Whitman Township, heart of, heart of Montgomery County, right on the demarcation line on two oh two, where we've been holding the line for ten years as we've lost registration and demographics is starting to get the better of us. I've learned how to win in that environment, win decisively in two thousand and fifteen. And it's a tough year with all the infighting to win that race. But you look at the things that we've done in Whitman. Twelve point eight square miles, about twenty thousand residents, fiscal excellence, not a tax increase in nine years, triple A bond rating, only a handful of townships, municipalities and states have a triple A bond rating. We introduced public-private partnerships that get other people to pay for things that our township needs. And we've revitalized the community, our West Amherst region. Those are the kinds of things that will bring together, working all together, school districts, municipalities, and make it happen.
So the question was by a minority commissioner. If we look in history, the past three minority commissioners, you'll see his big contrast in how they sold the role. We had Joe Hopple. He sold his role as cutting a deal with Jim Matthews and to push Bruce Castor out. That's how he sold his role when he was minority commissioner. Then Bruce was the legitimate minority commissioner with the two Democrats, and he sold a different role. His role was to be a lap goal for the Democrats. His goal was to cut a deal and get what he could out of it. That included voting for the tax increase that you all suffered. That was one of his last votes as minority commissioner. He only had one no vote. That's because he That's because he wanted to be vice chair. He thought he should have been vice chair after L R pushed, to talk about somebody who's worried about their own ego instead of the voters. And then you have Joe Gale, a real minority commissioner, not a watchdog, a watchdog for Montgomery County families and taxpayers. He does the role of the minority commissioner. He's an outspoken voice for everything they're doing wrong. He's an outspoken voice for everything we know is right. We talk about issues that don't matter. Let me tell you something about a minority commissioner. Pro-life. He proved it when the Montgomery County Republican Committee endorsed the board member Planned Parenthood, and he ran against that candidate, beat him in the primary, went on to win the general. He went off to Reddit, Berks County, and spoke for families there when they were trying to play Planned Parenthood in public high schools. And he used his position and his influence to, to stop that. A nine-member Democrat board voted it down 5 to 4. That's what a minority commissioner can do, except for responsibility. That's what Joe Gale has done. We couldn't be, we couldn't have a better representative in that minority spot. The only thing that can be better is the Gale brothers in the minority spot. Thank you.
We still have Dean after me, also. So the question was about how we can act as the minority commissioner. Well, I would act as number one, what Fred said, and that is that I'm not running to be a minority commissioner. I'm winning the, uh, win back one Montgomery Plaza. Number two, I think that my record over the last three and a half years on our Board of Commissioners in Upper Pottsville has proven my ability to do that. Number one, you have to go into any discussion understanding that the person across from you, they believe just as strongly in their principles as you believe indoors. And you have to respect that, number one. You've got to understand that disagree doesn't have to be disagreeable, number two. I spoke about the tax increase in November. Two years later, we decreased. What I didn't tell you is that I was the sole no vote in that tax increase. What I didn't tell you is that that board didn't substantially change. Only one member changed. But the tax decrease two years later was unanimous. How does that happen? That doesn't happen when you sit in a boardroom and just vilify the folks on the other side of the table. It only happens when you're willing to roll up your sleeves and work and make your points without being disagreeable. So if, unfortunately, if I weren't the minority commissioner, the first thing I would do is walk in and apply those principles. But never forget the principles that make me a Republican, that then I use to define policy. So thank you very much.
I believe we can win the majority. But as a realist, from a minority standpoint, I had the unique opportunity in my first two years since serving in the Plymouth Township, coming into a democratically controlled council. The council was a very difficult time, and I've learned many, many things over those first two years. You need to build bridges, not burn bridges. You need to negotiate. You need to talk and communicate. Closing doors and not getting things done doesn't work. It was a difficult time. It was a time when we, Plymouth, for the first time after our history had gone democratic, had to learn to cope with the things that were being done, done with the Democratic Party. Because they don't think on their own. They think and they're instructed to do what they're told. We, as Republicans, know that we do, we have a set base. We do the right thing. We all are Republicans, and I think that's the biggest thing I can tell you. So Judge, as the minority, I've lived it. And what you do is you make sure that you get everything you can and do what you can to be the watchdog of those who have control and the keys to the House. Because they are doing things and being told to do things and being instructed because they don't think independently. That's the experience I have. And I think having, as served as the minority, the difficulties, and then the majority, been turning things around and reversing the ordinances that they placed in there on us was my biggest accomplishment, and I'm very proud of it. Thank you. All right, the, the next question is, what is the most critical thing you believe needs to be changed about a current county policy or county department? Sean?
That's easy. The thing that needs to be changed is the minority commissioners. They have to get the heck out. And the Gale brothers have to get in so we can collect taxes. It can be done. Joe's already proposed how we can collect taxes in the millions of dollars of waste in the budget. He's exposed it. He's exposed the corporate cronyisms, and he gave me jobs that go to all the political hacks. That can be cut out of the budget, be horny, and the taxpayers coughing. So that's the main thing we have to change is the majority commissioners. The one thing we don't need to change is Joe Gale on the board. He has been the most consistent conservative voice in Pennsylvania, not only Montgomery County, in Pennsylvania. That is the kind of government we need in Montgomery County. We know it works. Most of you wouldn't be in this room if you didn't believe in conservative values. We know if we get out of the way, we can win. Now, there's, in the past five years, there's been proposed 4,000 housing units to be put in Montgomery County. We talked about the sprawl out of Philadelphia, and we talked about the reasons that they come and I, the one I'm debating with here, the moderators, and I actually agree with you on that point. They want low taxes. They want good schools. They want safe streets. And we can offer that in Montgomery County, and a lot of places in the county we do. We can build on that. And with the leadership, true conservative, reliable leadership that you'll get from the Joe Gale, Sean Gale, county commissioner-controlled door is what we need to change here in Montgomery County.
Thank you, Judge. The number one thing, first and all, is one-party rule, right? So we need to pluck some of those seats back, if not all of them, number one. Number two, I think we can all agree, it's voter services. Voter services in the last few years. For all of us here that have run for office, that have tried to help somebody run for office in the last couple of years, voter services is a filing office. It is there to accept petitions. The court is there to hear objections and strike down petitions based on those objections, not voter services. That's it. Thank you.
Judge, I go back to the money. I think what we need to do, if we had the opportunity, would be in the Office of Budget, our finance department. What a disgrace how they paint a picture. Some of you are more educated than I am in the budget. I had some education earlier this evening. But what they do in the budget is basically tell you that it's $17 million in debt and it's actually $45 million in debt you were paying. So I think if I needed to change anything, it would be the transparency of the government and fixing the budgetary issues that are currently there.
We're going to have some agreement here, because I absolutely agree. Number one is voter services, because that's where it all begins. Uh, I look at Whitman Township, where we have racing, as we all do, races determined by just a handful of votes. My friend Jim Daly lost by two votes two years ago. We got to get voter services right. Trust me, there are a lot of priorities. There are a lot of things broken in Montgomery County now. But number one, that number one priority must be voter service. Who amongst us thinks that this $7 million for new voting machines for this primary, who here thinks that's going to, that's going to run pretty smoothly? Nobody, right? So voter services is right up there, and I agree, that's number one priority. I'll tell you what, right up there next to it is traffic. Traffic, right? Everybody, it drives us crazy, right? Somebody is going to stand there in that planning commission and say, "Wait a second. Why are you approving something in Upper South or Whitman or Plymouth or Lowerbury, right? Because the planning commission has a lot to say, particularly in those municipalities where the Montgomery County Planning Commission is the planning consultant for the municipality." So we talk about big city machine politics coming. It's coming to your municipality through your planning commission, right? Where they are approving developments. You know what? I didn't get to watch the State of Union last night, until I DVD'd it, right? Because we were in a Whitman Township Board Supervisory meeting where I had the township manager go through 12 major developments that are coming to Whitman Township. Every one of them is going to be a fight, and you got to be armed. You got to know what you're doing. I mean, I have a degree in regional planning. I'm not a practitioner of it, but I know how to ask the right questions. And with you all at prompting me to do that, we'll do it. But voter services and traffic.
Let me, there, just one more question. Please, I don't know what the time is. I lost, I lost my, I lost my watch when I lost my arm. One more, okay. All right, the fifth question I have is, name a person who influenced your decision to run for public office and explain how this occurred.
It's the easiest for me. One of them's sitting right there. The other is home, doing math. Probably in bed by now. My kids. That's why I'm there. As I said, I don't need a commissioner patron. I'm running for that. I'm running for a mission. I'm running for a mission so that these kids, your kids, our kids, don't have to deal with this sprawl that just keeps coming and coming at us. They don't have to deal with the big city machine politics, which is coming and coming. Somebody's got to stand up and say, "Stop." Somebody's got to stand up and spook up and say, "Stop," right? I can't do it by myself. Need that team of teams going back. So my, my logo, right, Fred Conner for County Commissioner. Oh God, one of these, we got more, right? I'll give you a handful, right? I chose as my logo a commissioning pennant, right, from a Navy ship. You know about commissioning pennants? When you, you commission a ship, right? First captain gets the original one, and every captain after him gets a commissioning pennant. Got seven, sorry. As you go forward, I've got seven priorities that we're going to talk about. Voter service, number one, traffic, number two. We'll get into it around this line. Join me in this mission. Let's commission this mission and work together, right, as, as a team. That's what we're after, right? Because at the end of the day, I like the judge you're saying, "Why, why are you here? Why are you doing this?" Not for yourself, but for the future, for our kids, our kids' kids. That's what drives me for community, into community service. I've done it now for 15 years in so many different ways, in so many different venues. I'm doing it for the future, not for our kids.
So I have two minutes, and to me, it's a two-part question. One is what influenced my running mate to run originally? And that's when he elected candidates that were running for office. Joe and I had both been committee people for years. Joe was elected first in 2008, serving the committee, and I was elected in 2010. Both the youngest in the committee at that time. And we helped every candidate. We went door to door. We put up the signs. You had an event, we were there. Anything you needed, call the Gale brothers, they'll get it done for you. But then we kept seeing something happen. Good candidates go unsupported. Candidates we supported get elected and then vote like Democrats. So the person who influenced Joe to run, there was two. One was Tom Corbin, who was elected in four years. The only thing he did was raise the gas tax, no pension reform, no privatizing drug and alcohol, nothing, just raising gas tax. That's not what we helped in 2010. And then in 2015, to add insult to injury, the Montgomery County Republican Committee endorsed a board member of Planned Parenthood to be the standard bearer for countywide election. That's what influenced Joe to get run. That's what influenced me to be his campaign manager, and that's what influenced the Republican voters to elect Joe Gale four years ago. Why I'm running to influence me to run? It's the two Democrats on the board. It's the 22% tax increases over two years. It's a $5 added to your vehicle registration fee. It's the idea that enough is never enough. They want more out of what's in your pocket. That's what influenced me to run. And I think that's what's going to influence the Republican voters, there's 200,000 or more than that in Montgomery County. That's what's going to get them out the door. And that's why the Gale brothers is the ticket that is going to win not only in May, on May 21st, we're going to win, no doubt. Then we're going to win in November, and we're going to take the whole thing back. That's what this is about, and that's why I'm running for county commissioner.
Well, I want to try not to use the full too many, Your Honor, because I think that I spoke to what influenced me to do all of this in my introduction to all of you tonight. It's that legacy of my grandmother. It's the legacy of my father. It's the legacy of my father's father and my mother's father where I got my name. And I'm very proud of my name, by the way. And yes, my name is France, like the country. It's not Francis, Frank. But that's, I'm a shoes-in type. That's my biggest influence, is that legacy. And I'm trying to pass that love of country, that legacy, that commitment to service, that seeing what you are doing right now out, all the way out. Don't start something and then halfway through or two-thirds through, figure, "I am done with that. Let me try something else," before you've finished what it is that you're doing. I'm trying to instill that in my son and my girlfriend's daughters, and I intend to do that as your Montgomery County Commissioner. I will finish my four years. I have finished my four years as a township commissioner. That term is up this year. I'm not running again for that spot. I'm running for Montgomery County Commissioner. So my biggest influence to answer your question is my family, its legacy and its history. And going forward, it's my son, your sons, our grandchildren. Thank you very much.
I'm running because I was asked by you. You came to me, all of you, my family, and everyone in Montgomery County. I've been traveling around. You came to me and you said, "We're looking for something better. We're looking for somebody who's not a politician." I am not a politician. Someone who serves on local government eight years. I haven't been involved in the party, and I'm looking for the support from you, the Republicans of Montgomery County. But my family, fifth generation, here in North County in Plymouth Township, I'm proud of who my family has brought to me, and they made me who I am, of Italian immigrants and also of German people from Meister County who came here a long, long time ago. And for them and my children and their children, I'm doing this for them. Thank you. All right, as my mistake, we're not going to take questions to the floor, are we? No. I, I'm not the boss. I'm just the judge. All right. Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
I want to reach, where do you go, and let me see the crowd? Thank, thank you all. And I, I hope this is good for them.
I wanted to answer the question.